Welcome, everyone. And for roll call. We all received copies of the minutes from our September 20 meeting. Like to ask for a motion to approve this. Do we have any discussion, questions in the minutes? All those in favor, put them up in the minute. Any opposed, any abstentions? Jessica, I'm standing. Okay. No? I know, because we know Jessica.
Look, we're rushing. We are that.
Note two, next meeting we'll separate you. All right. We have no adjustments to the agenda, so I'll invite anyone who would like to present to the board this evening to come on up. It's okay. For Board Report Out, I just want to say there was a handful of us, Niles, Alan, Wally, and Amanda, who were able to make the Me Ask, Welcome Day, welcoming on Sunday. And I just want to say how impressed I was with the staff and the students of Reedsbrook and how they represented the district, the work that went into that. Congratulate Don on that, because I heard it was excellent. They were extremely impressed with all those who took part in the day, but especially the students, as you can imagine. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and also a special thank you to Carrie Field and Rachel Larabee, who were co-chairs of that, unfolding that all together. And with that, will go to personnel?
Under personnel, I have no resignations to report this evening. We have a nomination. If you look at your agenda notes, that is the Melissa Pierce is the nomination for Special Education at McGraw Elementary School. You can see Melissa has a master's degree from Robert University in Pennsylvania, a number of years of experience as well. So I'd recommend an assurary endorsement, Melissa Pierce, Special Education Teacher at McGraw Elementary School, salary $36,559.
All those in favor? Anyone?
Thank you. Melissa? Yeah, there she is right there. Melissa, congratulations. Okay, the next lady, Trish, I'd like to have you come right up to the board. Come right up here and sit right down, because I'm going to introduce you to the board and the public. Trish Hayes-Patricia, which I believe goes with the name Trish Hayes, is going to be our new district accountant. She spent yesterday, and I know today, with Ann, and I think they have some time outlined next week as well. For the benefit of everyone in the audience, Trish currently is the Business Manager in RSU-19, which is the Newport area. Prior to that, she was the Business Manager at the University of Maine Alumni Association, Business Manager at United Technology Center, and the Business Manager with a long tenure in SAD-41, which is the Milo area, and also SAD-34, which is the Old Town area. And I spoke to her superintendent, which ironically was the superintendent of both districts when Trish was there, and that's David Walker. Trish has a Bachelor's of Science in Accounting from Hudson University. She's a member of the Maine Association of School Business Officials, and she has a desire to work on advanced study as well. So Trish and Regan and I have met a couple, three times, and working out a start date, which is a little bit maybe undefined right now, but we're very comfortable that over the next two to three weeks, she's going to spend a large amount of time with us and hit the ground running when she comes full-time. So Trish, welcome, and I'd ask you to make any comments that you'd like to make to the board, please.
Well, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come work here. I've already been warmly welcomed, so I appreciate that. I know I have big shoes to fill with Ann leaving, but I think we can do that, and I'm looking forward to working with Rick and Regan and the possibilities of our future. Thank you for having me. Looking forward to meeting everyone.
And also, just for everyone's benefit, Heath also represents the board directors on the review process. We had a number of interviews, and we're very blessed and very welcome, welcome Trish to our district. So why don't we go around, I know you probably won't remember my name, but I'll start with Mr. Cuddy right down here. Scott, you do introduce yourself, please.
It's good to start with me, because I'm totally forgettable, so that way when you get all the way around, you don't have to worry about it. I'm Scott Cuddy. I represent the board from Winterport, and I'm really happy to have you coming on board.
I'm Jane Dyer, and I'm a board member from Hampden, and just want to say, welcome.
Amanda Seidel, board member from Hampden.
Jessica King, I'm also a board member from Winterport.
Jessica Giles from Newburgh, welcome.
Tony Librottoy from Hampden, welcome.
Wally Fraser from Hampden, welcome.
I'm Karen Hawks from Hampden. We're happy to have you. Thank you.
John Horst from Winterport, welcome.
I'm Alan Goody from Frankfort.
Niles Park from Hampden, welcome.
Rob Frank from Winterport, chaired the Budget Committee, so you and I will spend more time together in a few months, a lot of time.
I'm Lucas Plannigan, a junior here and a student representative.
So Rob is the chair, the vice you mentioned, Trish. As you know, Heath is the chair of the Finance Committee. Also, we anticipate that Trish will be attending board meetings. You might be interested to know that that was part of her regular business, is the Business Manager to be present at board meetings. So that will be beneficial to Regan and myself over the upcoming months, so you'll see her present with us as well. So, thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go to the Superintendent Report. Reading Essential Behaviors Outbound Proclamation, saving years' gun.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who commute the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all students in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves, our schools, our community support systems, and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Doc. Item B, I've included the most recent update from Maine School Board Association. It has a wealth of information in there. We'll be talking about the resolutions a bit later, because we do have to discuss those and embrace those or take a position of opposition. Usually, pretty straightforward, and I think these, in my opinion, are as well. In here, just to again accentuate the CDS conversation, Mary had a conversation this evening with the Education Committee on the proficiency-based education theme. We're going to discuss that on the Education Committee Report in a moment. And I think in here, again, this is very well-written and a lot of information. The next exhibit I gave you is an eight-part overview of some research that's been done in governing boards over the last two or three centuries. It's an eight-section review, and it doesn't really require or mandate any conversation, but I've always found some very positive feedback from school board members when they look at the eight conditions as to what is present in an effective governing body. And the first one that we're looking at tonight is that of belonging. And if you look at some of the indicators there, that kind of struck me in the Education Committee tonight, they were talking about culture and climate. And to me, what that's like belonging is because you look at divergent viewpoints, students make presentations at board meetings, school board members talk with pride about their district and so on. I would ask you, though, the next page, if you're willing, to just share some comments when you look at the four questions. When you look at those four questions, each of them, anything come to mind that you'd like to share with your fellow board members and people in the audience? So first, for the benefit of the people in the audience, the first question posed to board members here is, how does our board show that we respect divergent opinions and ideas? How does our board show that we respect divergent opinions and ideas? So Scott, I know you're just dying to say something, but I look at you, I think of the Community Relations Committee, where we're trying to push out information, right? We're trying to be an informant to the community to know what's going on. And that, in my opinion, is really ideas, the ongoings of the district. So that's a very recent initiative that we've put forward. Aside from that, what strikes you when you think about that as a board member?
Well, I normally, I try to adhere by, there's an idea in some of the meetings I go to called Step Forward, Step Back, which is if you're a person who talks a lot, like me, that you try to step back from doing things. But I did want to say this one thing, sort of in regards to that, which is that when, this is something that can be misread by the community, but when somebody gets up to the podium and they sort of deliver a little bit of fire and brimstone toward the board, there is an argument with it. We don't, we don't address it as much as some people would like, but allowing somebody to have their say and not coming back at them is a way to respect that different opinion. I mean, clearly, if someone's given us the business, they're disagreeing with something we've done, or some position we've taken, and it can be misread to be disinterest, I think, sometimes, by the people that come up and speak. But I look at it as a sign of respecting the fact that they have a very different opinion. It may, there may be, not be the information there to support their opinion, and we may disagree with it, but we don't argue with them. Because if you're, you know, a member of the community who maybe isn't a public speaker by trade, and you come up and you address this board, if we start going after people, that would be really silencing different voices, and I'm glad that we don't do that.
Well, and there's another way to look at that as well. That person has probably spent the last 40 hours researching the topic they're about to speak, and in many cases, we're caught behind the learning curve on the topic. So for us to individually respond, or even try to respond that evening, you know, it's not disinterest, it's listening, and then we come together as a board, we determine as a board how we want to approach the issue, and then we formulate a response. It takes some time, but I mean, there's a lot of folks around the table, and we represent the whole district, not just individual opinions, so it could, I think the communication plan that we've laid out for this, where we introduced, is a great way to help speed up getting that answer back to folks, because during the budget cycle, we know, it seems like it took a while sometimes.
My question too, how do we listen to and utilize students' ideas and opinions?
Just as an area of options, maybe.
That's Lucas.
And Lucas, have you made any headway with your plan there online?
About the connection between the students and the representative? No, we're still in the beginning stages of figuring out logistics for that, so we have to figure that out. In terms of other ways that students can contact and provide their own ideas, I think it could have a better system in terms of communication, like I was saying about the electronic version, and more student immersion, essentially. I do think that there are ways for students who are really self-motivated to bring their ideas to the board indirectly, but I think it would be more beneficial if there was a direct method.
You know, speaking of that self-motivation, I mean, I read two letters and handed two other letters out that I received directly from students, because they were interested in addressing the board, and perhaps didn't want to come to the podium to speak, although some do as well. So that's another way, so long as we demonstrate our openness to listening to them, that students will contact us.
I think, as I listen to you, it would be also Mr. Raymond to me, because Mr. Raymond is the advisor to the Student Council, so that might be another mechanism that I might do a little bit of reaching out. Question three, how do we make ourselves available to listen to people's concerns and feelings? How do we make ourselves available? Any thoughts on that? Well, I'm sure if you're probably like me, when you go through the aisles of Hanaford, doesn't that really create?
It doesn't, doesn't always turn up to a lot of places.
Okay. Or are you on Facebook, or are you on email, or you have community groups that you're together with?
I think having our contact information on our website really opens the door to accessibility, and I certainly have people within the community who'll call and email me. And so I think the, it's there, the contact information is there, and we just need to let people know that that is there, and they have the ability to do that, and make them feel comfortable doing that. But knowing that much of it, you know, we speak as, we have to be coordinated in our responses, and that takes some time, because sometimes these questions and concerns that we feel as individual board members have to be brought back to the board or committee for further discussion before we can really articulate a thoughtful response.
Let me give you a side, just don't let me, Tony and I have been having a conversation to follow up our resolution conversation. Tony came up with a great idea.
Oh, Rob came up with it.
Oh, Rob, oh, Rob ran up that idea?
Well, what?
So anyway, Rob, I, I'm going to share credit. I had a conversation yesterday with the, with the New England Regional Director of the Homeland Security and Immigration, and they're going to put me in contact with either the Bang or Portland office.
Okay.
And it's my hope that we'll have representatives from that office come and share with the board, what are immigrate, what's the, what are the rules of the road with immigration? What do they do to help schools of figure that nature, and some tidbits that we can take away? So hopefully, that will occur in the next couple of weeks, but there's, I think, my point of sharing that is, we had the resolution, we had some people making points of advocacy, and we're trying to listen to that to bring back further information and follow up to the board directors, again, to be probably better educated about that particular thing. That's the goal there, and I think that we can reach that, so I think that's moving forward. The final question this evening, what do we do to understand the unique needs of all students in the district? The unique needs of our 2,422 children?
I think we're already there. I mean, we're staying abreast with society, and when, when society highlights a unique situation that's changing from the standard, we're, we're there to let students know that they're supported with their decisions and make policies as opposed to a knee-jerk reaction after an incident occurs sometimes.
That's a good point, Tony. And I think of John when you said that, John's point about, in one of our previous meetings, that we did the policy on transgender students, and we were very proactive. How do we respond to those situations that arise? I, I think in the Education Committee tonight came up with our renovated school and our two middle schools, and we now have five children from our middle schools going to Eastern Maine Community College in the new, innovative program. And Mr. Tracy did some overview tonight, some of his aspirations on how that will dovetail in the future as well.
I also enjoy seeing the, usually it's more in the form of accolades, but having the students come in and share some of the programs they've either done competitively or just as a group setting. To me, that's one of the highlights of board meetings, to have them come in and show what they've been up to. It just blows you away to see what's going on.
And this is where I would encourage board members to find some time to go visit schools. Scott and I are talking tonight, he's going to bring up a comment later about where do we have our board meetings. Not to put you on the spot, you don't need to answer, but how many people have not been at the Smith Elementary School, for example, or the Wagner Middle School? It, it's kind of very pleasing, I'm not one of poetry, but I come to the poetry competition in the academy every year, it's absolutely startling. You don't, you wouldn't think that would be, I'm not saying not enjoyable, but it's a very unique situation to listen to students read poetry or do poetry versus the, the unified basketball game or something of that nature. So what goes on in their schools on a given day is truly remarkable. Then two summary comments, and I'll move on. And the first one is provide guidance to new board members for the entire year. The learning curve, I've been told, for a new board member is pretty shocking. Pretty shocking. And then listen to concerns from all people, not just the vocal few. We all have certain personalities and dispositions, don't we? You probably get the role of the chair sometime, having met a chair in a number of organizations before. How do you know that someone is a good thinker here, but somewhat reluctant maybe to share with the rest of the people? An effective chair, not to say our chair is not effective, but how do you bring those people into the conversation? I was a chair of the hospital board for nine years. I found that a challenge, when you're, when you're trying to facilitate a meeting with 13 doctors. I won't go that way, anywhere that, up to Librottoy, but how do you make sure people are all weighing in with their, with their very profound sentiments or belief and doing it very constructively? That's an art to do that.
Just one point on that, is that teachers do that every day. That, that's a real skill for a teacher. This whole thing is about belonging.
Yes.
And that is a essential piece of how children feel that they are, that they belong in a classroom, is to do just what you do. That little person that's sitting there doesn't say a word, and you know they have so many things to say. And it is, it is an art, and it's a talent, to be able to draw them through and make them feel like they do belong. So, so I think that comes full circle from this board to the classrooms that we are supporting every day.
And my belief, having been superintendent now for a long period of time, it really boils down to the culture and climate within an organization. And when people come and observe us doing our business, we do have to make some difficult decisions, and that's fine, but how do you respond and how do you act professionally with a high degree of integrity? And I think that is a measurement of success. So the next seven meetings, I'll give you the other seven parts, and hopefully, as you see these go along, they really do come back to us as how do we individually collectively operate as a governing body? Okay, now let's see. Regan, care about.
So for the Assistant Superintendent Report this week, I wanted to take you to the Finance Committee recommendation. We will be hearing the minutes later on in the meeting, but the committee did come up with a recommendation to move forward with the agreed-upon procedures for VZ specifically. And so tonight, we wanted to make sure we're bringing that to the full board, and have you note that we're moving in that direction. That should be a pretty efficient, agreed-upon procedure to facilitate, as we discussed before. And we will move forward in the springtime, we'll come back to you, most likely with a recommendation to consider agreed-upon procedure again, to see how we've implemented the new procedures around our warrant signing that we had started back in the spring.
Regan, is that mostly focused around procedural throughout the year? Does it also include the report out as well? That would be beneficial at, I think it's not really our budget time, but it always comes up as a topic for budget.
Are you asking me if the report would be complete?
No, just the change or the changes that are occurring in that process. Does, will it have a report-out element that will hopefully streamline that conversation of VZ when we get to budget time, or maybe just having the conversation about VZ will streamline the VZ conversation?
That's my hope. I think that we'll get this report back relatively quickly, and so we should be able to have that by the end of the year.
Great.
Before we go into budget. Regarding facilities, we've been busy with the facilities this year. We started our campus inspection walkthroughs with Building Committee members, and several of you were on our first walkthrough on the 29th of September. I think that was a very positive day in many regards. We certainly were able to identify issues and concerns in buildings, but also give lots of credit to the teams that are taking care of the buildings, because we came away with a definite impression that things have been well-kept up, being monitored very well, and that we have identified projects we know for next budget cycle that we want to make sure are taken care of. Today, we had a risk control walkthrough with our insurance company, and we visited Weatherby School, Reedsbrook, and the playground. And they will be coming back again, likely in November, to go down to the Winterport campuses with us. They don't need to walk through Hampden Academy, because that was done at the time that it was built, and they're not asking to go to McGraw, except for the playground portion. That was also very informative, because they were aligning us with resources that our insurance company currently offers to their customers, so that we can continue to move ahead on many of the procedures we already run in the district. And they're going to give us a full report of recommendations that we should be following. Wanted to bring everybody up to speed that our Athletic Committee is talking at great length now about the athletic turf. And we have meetings coming up with both people who would be interested in being vendors for providing turf, but also moving ahead with the advertising project, to consider how revenue might be garnered through the replacement of the turf. I also spoke with the risk control folks today about some ideas they have around evaluating turf for its use, and they're putting me in touch with some resources to help us define the life that our turf does have left, and the adequacy that it's providing right now for use. Any questions about the turf project? Building Committee members, we're going to start having some integration between Athletic Committee and Building Committee at some point, when we have a timeline and an idea of what we'd like to recommend for us moving forward.
Regan, who is our carrier?
Liberty Mutual. The District Safety Committee will convene our first meeting on Tuesday, October 10, and I just wanted you to know that we do have a district-wide safety committee, all of our schools have individual safety committee meetings that are happening routinely. We will seek to meet close to once a month, district-wide, and if there are ever any items you hear from the public or that you have considered yourself, be sure to let Brittany know or myself know, we'll make sure it's on the agenda for discussion. And we find that these really help us to be cohesive and consistent across our buildings. You've already heard tonight that Trish Hayes is joining us from the Human Resources Society's District Captain, and we're very pleased about that. And to let you know, on Friday, we have an in-service day, and one of the components that we'll be running on that day is the introduction of Target Solutions Human Resources Training across the district. So all employees, no matter what category, will be encountering six trainings from bloodborne pathogens, sexual harassment, FERPA, so that we have that done and done apples to apples across the district. We can report to that online platform. And that would be our report.
Okay. All right, Lucas?
Don't have anything for this evening. Information's already been touched upon, and I wanted to mention.
All right, sir. Thank you, Karen.
Do we have any questions of board members?
This isn't a question, but Rick and I did speak about this earlier, because we were talking about the different schools, different buildings that we have, and I think it would be great if at some point in time, we would meet as a board in some of the other buildings. Because, you know, I, what really sparked for me was, you know, we're doing the tours as the Building Committee and seeing all the buildings. The first time I went through McGraw, I had never, you know, I went to the Winterport schools, I never set foot in McGraw and walked through the school before last year, when Principal Briggs gave me a tour through the school. I had no idea of the layout of the school, didn't know what it looked like. And to go through Smith School right now, and, and look at the, the shape of Smith School, and then to go through McGraw and see, you know, what they've had to take their stage and make the changes for class seats, and I think it would be great to have more people see each of the different schools. And it might even generate a little more interest if we're going to be, you know, in Winterport in one of the buildings there, maybe we'll have a few people in Winterport who otherwise might not come to a meeting, do that. So I just want to sort of put that, invite everybody here to, and not every single meeting, you know, most meetings be here, but maybe the second meeting of the month, or once every, once a quarter, have a meeting in a different place like that.
That's a great idea. Yeah, does anyone have any thoughts about that?
I think when I first started, the first year I was on the board, we did that. We were rotating between schools. The only, and it's a fantastic idea, the only, I think we ended up back here because of confusion. People were all going to the wrong place every time.
Yep.
Both the public and the board members.
I think with the Facebook page and the Communications Committee, it might be easier to put that out there and advertise, hey, this is where we're at, this is most. So if you're okay, why don't I bring at the next meeting a schedule for the next year, so that people know what school we're going to be on and given months, we'll know that well in advance. You can put it in your calendar.
Chair, this is not a question, it's more just a, if you comment or request, the Envision 2.0 is fast and furious in Winterport right now. There's been a lot of conversations around, I think, the parent portal, which I understand is, tonight is called Bounce, and maybe the rollout of that, having a parent night where we would sort of orient the parents on how that integrates, and how it is a much better program, but maybe something on our, our homepage with a little, you know, splat that says new, Envision 2.0, you know, here's, there will be a parent orientation night there, you know, you will be directed to the download that most people weren't aware, I think, existed, that helps understand what you're looking at as a, it used to be on the homework, or there used to be sort of a backup that, talking about it now, it's on a separate portal. There's going to be books, confused, and might be a nice way to show them that, that help is on its way.
Is that active right now, Mary? Does that get, well, different people, funny that we should talk about this tonight, we're still trying to get things up and running, and in fact, we have, Mabe has a meeting tomorrow with them, we're trying to figure out the online piece. So as soon as everything gets solidified, then we will definitely have a parent night so people can, we're still trying to get teachers and their accounts going.
I was asking personally, too, because that's a parent.
You want to know.
And I wouldn't wait to get it solidified for telling them that help is on its way, because we know that help is on its way. We're just letting them know that we heard them and that we're all in the same boat, because it's a, it's a big change.
Maybe we can generate something, a blurb that we can put, like, on the Facebook page and that kind of jazz, to let people know, but you and I can do it together so that the information is actually correct and good, yeah?
Absolutely.
Any other questions of board members?
I think two years ago, when I came on the board, we set up and did some tours of the different schools, Rick.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that something we could look at doing again?
Yes.
And would we go straight through you, or should we reach out to building principals?
You can reach out to building principals, if you have an interest going to the school, I look at Mrs. Briggs, just call Mrs. Briggs or email Mrs. Briggs, and I'm sure she'd be going. So feel free to do that on your own.
I'm also wondering, if we start rotating, at least for this first few times, we're at, first time we're at each school, maybe 30 minutes prior to the board meeting, we could just take a tour?
We could, we could maybe replicate what we did at UTC, Jamie brought that out tonight when we were in the education committee, going, you know, so you can go to 6:00 to 6:30 toward the school, and have the principal give us a tour, and then we can start a meeting at 7:00.
I was going to mention too, that we do have one more date, the building committee is going through Hampton campuses on our next date. It's more involved than a tour, because we're trying to actively dig into the issue, whatever issues the building may have, but that would be another opportunity to get a really good tour of the facilities.
Yeah, so please contact your principals.
Friday, October 13th. Would like to join.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Committee reports for finance committee? Who will be reporting out for the finance, since he's not here? I certainly can do that for us. At the most recent finance committee, we initially started our meeting by looking at regulation BDCBR. We wanted to put in a hierarchical list of administrators that would be authorized to approve expenditures if both the superintendent and assistant superintendent were out. So we did do that. And then we specified in the regulation that if we're in an emergency situation, and we've shared some of those with you, like field trip is needing to go within a day, we have authorized up to $1,000 in emergency expenditure in a situation like that. We have already touched on the agreed-upon procedure for VZ, and we also are looking into the future for the warrant signing procedures. And then in the far future, we would also come back and consider our purchasing and cash handling procedures for future testing, if we decide to do so. New business that came up had to do with our warrant articles and the status of each of those, and you will be seeing an update of those warrant articles next meeting, second meeting of every month, you'll be seeing them. We also looked at our year-end fund balance. What you may or may not know is that as your fiscal year concludes, that you need to report out on your fund balance, and there is an expectation that your fund balance, undesignated fund balance, not exceed 3% of your budget total. And this year, our fund balance is, I'll give you the exact number. Our fund balance is $1,597,854.87. After we have put forth the use for next year's budget, we've already committed $440,000 toward next year's budget, we've also approved up to $150,000 for capital reserves. We are $134,021.68 over the 3%. So we have up to three years to make a decision about how we'll move forth to expend those extra funds. And of course, with some of the projects coming up in our district, including the turf, for instance, we do have directions that we can consider, but we will be waiting for our actual audit to come back and make sure that we have met all of our encumbrance needs that we're going to be having, and also make sure that our budget in the future is going to have its needs met, so that we are making a full decision. So we'll be talking more at finance committee about the use. And then we reviewed debt service status in our district. So Anne made a wonderful graphic for us that categorized all of our debt service, gave us the status, and actually played out how the debt service would be owed up to 2034. So we have a really comprehensive look at our status right now, and we're going to go back into that and be looking again about financing. Anything else committee members would add? Thank you.
Just a question around the amount of fund balance, so I can't remember what, there's another term of art for that as well, that I can't remember what it is, but the, so the total is a little over 1.5 million currently?
Yes.
And the 440-some thousand, that is what we approved for this current budget, right? Not the, not next year, but if it actually, the year we're in, okay, correct. Just wanted to double check on that.
And remember, that's a bit of a stab in the dark, trying to target, to make sure that we stay below the 3% of the year, because we're never sure how it'll end up when we were closed, but.
Well, I'll tell you my opinion, Rick, so that's one of those problems that we like to have.
It's better to be a little behind us.
When your fund down's over 3%, yeah, that's a, that's a good situation, again, in three years to rectify that, given the significant issue we have with the term, so that'll come together very nicely.
Thank you. Athletic committee? Can I do you know if the athletic committee has met since?
We have not met since our last meeting.
Building committee?
We did the walkthroughs last week, did Newburgh, Wagner School, Smith School. I don't think we've ever had a meeting.
No meeting? Okay. Karen, did we, on the athletic committee minutes, there was a piece that talked about the family ID?
Yes.
Okay, so did that, was that approved at the committee level? I remember we had a presentation for it, and then I never heard any more, and then I saw that it was approved here, and I just was wondering where that.
It was approved at committee level.
At committee level, it will have come.
This year, and then a full rollout this year, is that right?
And where would that come in the budget? How much is that going to cost? I just, I mean, we heard, I heard the presentation, then I'd never heard any more, and saw this here, and thought, oh, must have missed something somewhere, which is good thing. So the total amount for that is $1,295 as a service, and we are intending to move forward with that contract. There is a question right now in my office around the way that that service is going to be feeding the need around athletics, and another service possibility that we may have in the district, but we need to look more into that. But likely, we'll be moving forward with the contract. It's actually a cost that is done per student, so we feel that with the money that we have in the budget this year, we can cover it. Okay. Thank you. All right, education committee, Mary?
Yes, we met right before the meeting, and I'm going to go backwards, because, Mary, the first topic we talked about, I'm going to have either you or Rick present, you've done a much better job than I, and it's important. So we had a short discussion about, as I mentioned last meeting, we really looked at the strategic plan and the tasks that have been given to the education committee, and we want to make sure that we're very planful around that, and structure our year with the education committee based on the strategic plan. There was some question about one of the goals, about differentiation and learning, and it sounds like after hashing it out a little bit, the concern was more about how we worded that goal on the strategic plan. So we're going to look at the wording and bring it back to the education committee next, in two weeks, and then we'll be bringing that information back to the board to talk about further. We've had a standing item, school climate and culture resources on our agenda, that was requested by a private citizen who hasn't been able to make the meeting, so we tabled that, and we'll continue to table that until this citizen's able to come. Most of our meeting was spent talking about, as you all know, the proficiency-based diploma is coming, which you're going to hear more about in a second, but part of that includes not just educational credits, but educational experiences. So starting to get a little bit of traction and definition around what is an educational experience, how do you define that, how do you, what's the criteria for someone to host an educational experience? And Bill, is Bill still here?
No.
Bill has a lot of experience around us, and had started some programs at his other schools about providing children various educational experiences, and so we walked away with a to-do list, including starting to gather information about local businesses that may want to be interested in hosting a student, and starting to kind of define the criteria form that would need to be filled out, like, to start setting the criteria for those businesses, and for the students who would have to make a proposal for this opportunity. Right, so did I get it? Okay. The first thing that we talked about, though, is the new information out about proficiency-based diplomas, and I would ask either Rick or Mary to summarize that.
Mary, go right ahead, please.
So.
You can do a better job than I can.
I love it. So it was either yesterday or the day before, several of our professional organizations sent out an email referring to the proficiency-based diploma and the law associated with it. And in the conversation, it talked about a change in rulemaking. Well, that started a fair amount of chatter in all different groups all across the state, so my group, the curriculum group, came back out with it, with a response to it first, saying that we're talking, we're not changing the law, the law is the law, it's staying that same, it's just what are the components of it. So the analogy I've used to explain it to people today is, if you think about it at the board level, as a policy, you would have a policy, which would be the PVE law, and then you have regulations, and so that's where the rulemaking piece, what are going to be the things that are expectations that come to school systems. And one of the biggest issues has been around the concern for students who may be identified as special education, the ability to be able to get a high school diploma. So it's, what they're going to do now is convene focus groups, so they'll be looking from students to parents to my curriculum group, and superintendents in various organizations as focus groups to come in and provide more feedback to them about where they're going to go from here. And as I said to Rick today, and to the ed committee tonight, our strategic plan is very clear, we've had a very clear direction, and so we're just full speed ahead, and just wanted to let you know, because I'm anticipating that tomorrow, when the DOE priority notice comes out, it may well be publicized in the news as well, so I just wanted everybody to have a heads-up on that. So law's still intact, and off we go.
And also, when we first started talking about proficiency-based diplomas, I guess a long time ago, but several years ago, we started this conversation, and we knew that something like this may happen, that the laws change from under our feet, and at that time, the education committee had kind of taken a stance that this is the best, this is what's best for our district, is the proficiency-based education. The administrators around the table today at the education committee continue to agree with that, and so instead of trying to zig and zag every time our rules zig and zag, we had made the, years ago, had, had the hope that we would kind of stay steady with this direction, and our strategic plan also lays this out as well, so that's not to say we're going to be rigid and not make changes where changes need to happen, but to also not be extremely reactive to whatever's happening.
This is a great example, as I listen, this is a great example that when this does come out in the media, that you'll have your constituents ask you, what does this mean? Because I thought my Johnny needed this, or my Suri's he needed that, does that mean that we now, I like the term zig and zag, now we're staying focused, and that's where we are.
Thank you, Amanda. Policy committee? UTC?
Yep, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago. We reaffirmed the live work policy to comply with President Grant. Live work refers to faculty at UTC having their, say, vehicles, snowmobiles worked on by the students, there's strict guidelines for that. We also reaffirmed the cooperative agreement for UTC, and that's important to remember, because every November, under that agreement, we have to vote for who's going to represent us, so. They also separated some programs, the plumbing and heating program got separated into plumbing and heating, two separate programs, and the culinary arts and hospitality curriculum got separated into two separate programs. And they also initiated a construction engineering curriculum. So they're very busy.
Okay, do we have any substance use committee, you had a meeting, right?
We met, it was kind of brief and short, we talked some about the HOPE tulip project. I'm going to help you out.
That was a day ago.
Acadia Hospital and Bangor Public Health Partner in rolling out the HOPE tulip project for our community. Students started it in Southern Maine after two friends completed suicide. Acadia Hospital donated tulip bulbs to anyone that wanted to sign up to be a part of this. So Hampton Academy planted a tulip garden outside, in the meanwhile, waiting for the tulips to grow. They took some little pieces of paper, and students are going to write "HOPE"s on them, and they're going to put them out as the tulip garden while they're waiting for the tulips to come up. Is that a good summation?
That is a good summation, and I should have said this during board talk in time, but I just want to, as an Acadia employee, I just want to put out there that Hampton Academy volunteered their location for filming, it's a new Acadia Cares video series, so it's child and adolescent resources and educational series. And so we, this is our first part of a number of series, and the goal was actually specifically to help educate teachers, caregivers, and parents about how to, kind of very high-level and simple information about how to help people with various, kids with various mental health issues. And the first one is on suicide prevention. You may have seen the teaser and the news, and the full video is coming out soon, but it's, the goal was also to be very aesthetically pleasing and to draw a crowd in, and I think Hampton Academy, as the filming ground, certainly helped with that goal, so.
Thank you. And the community relations committee?
Yeah, we did meet just this past third, yesterday. We discussed some changes to the RSC22 Facebook page, we removed the review site, the page was intended essentially as a distribution, a way to get information out from the board, and we, our initial policy had been not to allow people other than administrators to post, and that was followed through on, but essentially, a review is a way for someone to post. So we have removed the review section. RSC22 Rocks still has its review section, that is intended to be a page that has discussion, so it's intended that when you find the rock, you're going to take a picture, and you're going to post onto it, so people have the right to post on there. But we are in the process of developing language to explain the, what the page is for, the purpose of the page, to make sure that we're on the up and up, because when you are a government entity, and you are inviting comment, then you invite the comment, and people can say, I mean, so long as it's not threatening or lewd, people can say what they will. So we are, we're in the process of getting that language drafted together, and that was pretty much, there was a little bit of talk around Facebook to begin with. We also, as everybody knows, sent out an email during the meeting about the board biographies, asking people to finish those up, if you didn't have a chance to get your picture taken. Regan also included, I believe, the picture dates in that email, and there's a retake date, I believe it's November 7th. So if you haven't had a chance to get your pictures taken, you can, they make it very painless, I had mine done today, and although it was a little bit behind, they still snuck me in, and it was, it was very nice of them, and the kids were very wonderful. Actually, I got to tell you, the kids had been waiting like 20-plus minutes while I was there. There were almost 30 kids, I would say, waiting, not, I mean, not silent, but not at all, if I have my two kids waiting for 30 minutes, it's a little bit nuts. And the teachers, and the staff, and the kids all did a wonderful job with it. We had an update on the audio for the board meetings. The number came back a little higher than we thought it was going to be. So the wireless, the idea of the wireless mics and all that, that's out. The total, it came back around, a little over $18,000, and there's no way we were going to spend that kind of money on it. A wired setup could be 8,500 to 9,500, we were discussing that, but, and I apologize, it was there, I can't remember who made the point, we're really talking about four, maybe six meetings, that we actually need this for, in terms of, I mean, I think everybody, you know, in the public who's here tonight would agree, tonight's not a night where we really need, and I'm saying that you can't see on the camera, it's staff and board here tonight. We only meet in for four to six meetings a week, so. We only meet in for four to six meetings a week, so we talked about the possibility of renting, we talked about the possibility of having meetings in other parts of the school where this stuff's already set up, and all we'd have to do is add a couple of pieces to it. There are a lot of ways that we can accomplish the goal that we want without spending a pile of money, was the thought. And then for our next meeting, which is going to be November 7th, we are going to try to have a meeting that doesn't deal with any particular issues, but talks solely about a communications plan, a long-term, ongoing communications plan for how we're going to get word out about what the board is doing in a proactive way. And thanks to Amanda's idea, we're going to bring the strategic plan, lay it out, base our work off of that, like all of us really ought to be doing. And that's it.
Thank you Scott. Great, policy considerations, John.
The committee is bringing forward for second reading and adoption policy, D I Q, audits and financial monitoring, with no changes from the first reading. Just a motion for adoption. So moved.
All right, do we have any discussion questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? No, thanks John. We do have a policy committee meeting on the 10th too, list some items on the agenda, some folks might be fine interested. Okay, old business, National Management Association.
Just a reminder that that's now within the month, the 26th to 27th, you have a copy of the draft agenda. So if you let me know, just remind me, who is definitely going? Wally, Jessica, and Karen.
Are you going Jane?
Yeah.
And Jane. Okay, Wally, Jessica, Karen, and Jane.
Which Jessica?
Jessica King. Thank you. Thank you. So if anyone else desires to go, then just please email, please email myself or Gloria. In addition to that, you have the resolutions, the resolutions are basically position statements that are being asked to be acted upon doing what they call the delegate assembly. If you scroll down through those, you can see, usually they're points of advocacy, which is exactly what these are, school board training. Actually, they're promoting a regional concept here and a mentor-mentee framework. The career and technical education opportunities, expansion thereof, and that actually dovetails with our innovative program at the middle schools. Regionalization services, to share services recently, as you know, there's some money in the governor's budget to stimulate this. Technology in the classroom focuses on the broadband internet connectivity throughout the state. Graduation pathways for all learners, basically is proficiency based education, however, they're telling here that the state did take the money away to support that, and they're claiming that's an unfunded mandate, and they're looking obviously to restore the funding of that. Support for public education is stand up for public America that I've shared with you in past meetings, and the funding for the proficiency based education and career education. So unless anyone has any opposition, we would then probably look to endorse these resolutions at the delegate assembly. Does anyone want to address any of those individually or collectively? Feels pretty straightforward and usually pretty well thought out. Given that, then so far, we have three people, four people, Wally, Jessica, King, Karen, and Jane. We do have the opportunity to appoint one of you folks as our delegate assembly voting member that would actually vote on these resolutions that we just talked about. That occurs on Thursday afternoon around 2:45. So if there's anyone interested, please let us know at this time, and the board would endorse your participation insofar as being our delegate assembly voting member. Karen can do it. Perfect. Okay, so we're all set. So again, if any of the people have not let us know, and you do find out in the next couple of days that your work schedule allows you to attend, please let us know. Even if you can attend one day permissible, and if you can attend one day, I would encourage you to attend Thursday. Thursday's a full day, you have guest speakers, Friday usually draws up about 1:00, 1:30-ish, so that's what the schedule looks like. So thank you for that participation. Okay, new business, discuss an act on 2017-18's school overnight field trips, per board policy, any overnight field trip has to be approved with a board. These are all advanced to you. And I would ask for your endorsement and any question on any particular field trip.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion questions?
Phenomenal.
Oh, sorry, Jane, go ahead.
I had, I had asked Rick earlier today, a question about the Burt Island, I mean, I've heard nothing but fabulous things about it. My concern was that it was only two classrooms of the five that are at Weatherby, and why the other ones were not involved in it. That if it is such a good thing, then we should, we should be having that for everyone. And I did get some great answers back, but I do think it would be nice to hear from you all and to see, we are, if we're going to offer this, it should be for all of our students, if at all possible, so.
Jane, I really appreciate that, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jen Zier, I'm the principal at Weatherby. I'm pleased to introduce to you Matt Lindeman, who spearheads this project as a fifth grade teacher. And so in order to participate, you have to have training. And Matt has done the groundwork following the big shoes of Sue O'Brien in already completing that training. So I'm going to let him talk to you a little bit about this, and I just want to say, I'm so impressed with his efforts to make sure that this tradition continues, that we can have the opportunity to build capacity.
This is actually my first year taking the lead solely on the trip. I've worked with Sue O'Brien the past three years on the trip, and we kind of so coordinated it. I believe it's the seventeenth year that this trip has gone to Burt Island. Four years ago, my first year at Weatherby, when we moved to teaming, we did bring the whole fifth grade. The challenge with that was that Sue O'Brien had to be there as the teacher the entire week that we were there. And that was the year that I was trained, I kind of went and had on-the-job training. That posed some challenges. I'm fortunate enough that I don't have, you know, kids and other things to be, that I can be away for overnights for a week and attend that trip. Many of our other teachers aren't, don't have that ability to go and have that free time, was one of the concerns. And the other piece is that when we go, the classes that are back at Weatherby were being shifted around, and other teachers were covering classes that weren't their students, they hadn't worked with all year, so it created some logistical issues back at Weatherby. This year, the two classes that are going are the two classes that I teach on my team. And part of that process will be training my teammate, Abby Marvin, so that she could run the trip. With the hope that in future years, we can start expanding it back out and bringing more classes along. So it's something that we hope to do, to expand it to, at all fifth graders at Weatherby have the option to go to Burt Island. But as we move that process from having two teachers that were trained to run classes to just one, it's going to be a process of building a backup, backup capacity back up.
And just to clarify, Burt Island, in order to participate, you have to be trained. And so we're, in order to participate, we're meeting that requirement, so. I very much appreciate the question, I remember when I was here this summer, I think Dr. Librotto mentioned this trip, so I knew that it's an extraordinary experience. And there are other enrichment activities that the other fifth grade teens pursue. But this is one that we definitely want to hang on to and not lose this window.
And I just would like to make sure that we do leave that forward so that in the future, other students, other than just the two that, the children that are in your classroom, or those that are in Abby's classroom, are the only ones that get that opportunity. And when we are a public school and we have this be there for all, then all children should have the same opportunities, and this sounds like it's an absolutely fabulous one. So I really would encourage that training to go forward so that in the future, even if you had just switch, if some teacher couldn't go, and then someone else could go in their place, and they could take the, just to make sure that's going that way. We appreciate your support, thank you.
Interesting, so there are two classes, so each class is one overnight, is that how it works?
One night, yeah.
One night.
So Wednesday into Thursday would be my homeroom, and then Thursday into Friday would be Abby's homeroom coming in.
And can you just briefly describe the, what is the special training needed for, is it due to the island setting and the?
It's the, it's more or less delivering the program. Elaine Jones, who coordinates the program on the Burt Island end, does some of the instruction, but it's expected that the teacher who's coming along with the trip, who has that relationship with the kids, be able to deliver the instruction as well, it's kind of a team teaching piece on the island.
What kind of instruction is that, Matt?
We do a connection a lot with a unit we do in the classroom, that's a saltwater tank unit where we have animals from the Gulf of Maine in our classroom. So many of the pieces, we go to the coast and we do a tide pooling activity where we're down on the coast looking for these animals, and having that knowledge of the different phylms of animals and how they fall into the different groups and being able to discuss that. There is a number of survival activities we do since we're on an island, it's, you know, only a mile off the coast, not even, but it kind of fits that theme. There's the history of the island and the lighthouse service, a lot of it's just learning the material and the different activities that are done. It can be learned, you know, I learned it my first year going as a teacher, so it just, it takes the time and the willingness of the teachers to go and learn that.
I'd just like to echo what Jane said, spending most of my summer on the water, visiting a lot of places you talked about, and just watching how the kids, you know, from three months and six months old until even today are still showing interest in that. How do we grow that to the, to all the grades, to the other schools, et cetera, so that it's available or a similarly focused program? And I assume there's a capacity issue that this is, the program has a finite amount of focusing that can participate in this, many schools probably participate in it.
There are several, a few across the state. The in-season for Burt Island, the programs operate is May through September, so there's limited weeks during the school year where we're, you know, in function. It's difficult to do a school trip like that in September, so it kind of limits it only to about six weeks at the end of the school year, so the space is pretty, pretty tight for getting classes in.
Any other questions or discussions on this topic? Great, all those in favor?
Thank you. Thank you Matt, thank you Jane.
Thank you Matt for your volunteer. Okay. Warrant article transfers.
Okay, Mrs. Nichols, you want to go over this?
So in your packets, you have warrant article transfers listed out. And so at the end of your budget year, you are required to be sure that all of the articles in your budget have not been overspent. And so the transfers are a mechanism that is allowable for up to five percent to be transferred to an article, so that you end up with an amount that is not negative. And so that you also are amending your actual budget, so that it is accepted after your audit as being fully in compliance for each of the articles there. So our recommendations to you have been listed on the sheet that you'll see, and, and did a nice job as well of outlining how the transfers were made. Because she's very careful to make sure that all of the transfers are done within similar bodies, I'll call it, so that if you're having an issue with transferring or needing money transferred in payroll, the equivalent type of line is utilized to transfer out. And she does that for comparison purposes when we look back in the budget over time. In order for this to be accepted, we do have to have the warrant article transfers read into the minutes, and Alan is prepared to do that for us. But before we go down that road, I just wanted to give you an opportunity for questions about the transfer amounts, the categories of the transfers from the articles, anything that you would like to discuss.
Trudeau's to the team, this is something that, this happened quickly this year.
Yeah.
Quicker, I could say, if I recall last year, as we were talking about this issue, it was November?
I was pushed out last year.
Pushed out even further.
That's exactly right.
So to see this and to see it done in this fashion is great and highly transparent, so when we have the budget discussion, there's no question how these items were moved and how it's in meeting with the state law, which is really the purpose of the whole thing, so that's great, great work.
And one question, when I was looking over, I think it's a, yeah, the warrant article transfers A, it's just a number that for some reason comes out of me, but under total article nine, facilities management there, the percentage left over, percentage remaining is 4.31%. But looking at it, that number doesn't seem correct to me. If the revised budget was 3.5 million, and the total leftover is 1.5, or is 151,000, is that 4.2%? It doesn't, I mean, I'm sorry, it was my impression, I would be no math, but, but just looking at it, I mean, 10% would be 350,000.
That's right.
So it doesn't, and it could just be that I'm doing the back of the napkin math wrong.
And it goes into the adopted budget, or the revised rather, which is the same.
Exactly, yeah, the revised, yeah.
Right, the percentage is based on the revised budgets.
Yeah, that's correct.
I get 4.31.
You are, okay, cool.
It's that new envision 2.0, you have to subtract the number first, round it up, add it together, and then add the number back in, and it'll make sense.
Right.
So, okay, very good, so you came up?
Let me just, go get it.
Any other questions?
Good question.
Great. So I, we need to ask Alan to read.
Do you have to follow it or anything?
Yes.
Okay, pursuant to section 1485, subsection four of title 20A, the superintendent of schools is authorized to conduct the following transfers, provided the total operating budget for the previous fiscal year shall not be increased by such transfers. Up to 0.49%, not more than 17,150 of the total appropriation for this facilities management cost center for the previous fiscal year operating budget to the CTE and system administration cost centers. Up to 3.15%, not more than 40,000 of the total appropriation for the transportation cost center for the previous fiscal year operating budget to the other instruction, system administration, and school administration cost centers. Up to 0.85%, not more than 20,000 of the total appropriation for the student and staff support cost center for the previous fiscal year operating budget to the other instruction and school administration cost centers.
She'd like to ask for a motion.
So moved.
Any more discussion? All of us in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chair Cox, I, not a discussion, but more of a, just as a placeholder moving forward, what this will effectively do is take, it doesn't change the budget, it basically moves around, some had too much, some, well, in fact, in most cases, there were, one item, one line item was under, in most cases, they were slightly over crossboard, some were more than five percent over. So it's moving those around into a place that, as we close the books up for the year, shows what is an effective number, an appropriate number for that category. Since we've already established a budget for this year that learns from last year's budget, I assume we'll be using, just from a budget standpoint, we'll be using the adjusted numbers, if you will, as we look forward, because otherwise, we're going to do this every year. And this is part of, I think that the public considers, well, how come you're always over on this or that? Part of it is just right sizing it for what happens.
That baseline, that's correct.
Some of these are not a surprise, the fuel, some are, the sewer water, either we use less, or the, there wasn't an agreed to lump sum, I guess, so it might be a usage thing. So again, not to dig in with the weeds, it's just, this will inform next year.
That's right.
We're going back to it.
Any money's not used to transfer, to bring other items up, that all goes into that unallocated fund balance.
That's true, yes.
Thank you. Great, so we have, do we have any meeting dates we need to set?
Let's see, we have education, athletic, and our college. Let's see, we have education athletic, and our policy community relations. Looks like we might be all set, Karen. Anything for you, Reagan?
We will be needing to set a building committee meeting, but as of right now, we're waiting for some correspondence, so we have that.
So I'd say we're all set until policy, and then two weeks in time.
Great. Any other business we need to discuss this evening? If not, I'll ask for a motion for sure.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, folks.